Meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education, special meeting for June 30th, 2021 to order. Superintendent, can you please take roll?
Member Pritchett.
Recording in progress.
Member Pritchett.
Here.
Member Murawski.
Here.
Member Wu.
Here.
Member Garcia. Member Villa.
Here.
Member Rhodes.
Present.
Member Phillips.
All right, everybody is here. We have 26 public comments for closed session. I want to make sure that we hear from each of our community members, so I'm going to ask that each community member, please have your comments ready at one minute per comment. Oh, Ms. Sheila, how are you? Good. First, we have Mohammed Kashmiri.
Thank you so much. I've also been seated timed by Sid Jaggari. I wanted to speak about the two IASs that are being released. You know, I wanted to read a letter that's been sent to you by some of the BIPOC administrators, which says, "SUSD released a statement to publicly promote institutional commitment to anti-racism and equity." Unfortunately, they're also, you're also dismissing at the same time two of the instructional area superintendents of color, Dr. Kimberly Mackey and Dr. Olga Sims. And they are some of the folks, they're the only IASs in the district that represent African-American and Latino students in this district. They're the only ones that hold advanced degrees in education, which exceeds the credentials of our superintendent cabinet and the remaining three IASs. Dr. Sims, an SUSD classroom teacher, site leader, and now district leader, has worked tirelessly to reopen, safely reopen schools while addressing the inequities that have historically persisted in our district. Dr. Mackey, who worked in similar districts as an assistant superintendent, executive director, and site administrator, was recruited by SUSD and relocated here to further the district's commitment to implementing anti-racist practices. My understanding is they've spoke out about what needs to happen, and to just dismiss them just seems wrong. That was last sentence was my own comments. There is a pattern of SUSD where administrators of color who are advocates are silenced, dismissed from duty, and replaced by white administrators with far less experience and credentials. There's a pattern at SUSD where administrators who show the slightly disagreement with the CIO are silenced, dismissed, and replaced by white administrators, such as the case with Dr. Mackey and Dr. Sims abrupt release. Please note that a secondary white principal is privately shared with principals that he's preparing to leave his site and assume the IAS role. SUSD has 45 elementary schools, and you know, simply put, two-thirds of the SUSD schools are elementary schools, and it's unsustainable to remove the two of the three elementary IASs.
Thank you, Mr. Kashmiri. Please wrap it up.
Is that also with Sid's time?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, we want to see more transparency, and I want to see us show a real commitment to advancing administrators of color and have some transparency around that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenya Martinez.
Thank you.
Yes, I actually have seen time for Jose Martinez and Kense Martinez, but I want to yield one more minute to Mo.
I'm sorry. So, Kenya, you said that you're actually taking the vote, or I'm sorry, the time for two other members as well?
Yeah, for Kense Martinez, Jose Martinez, but I also want to yield one more minute of time to Mo, so he can finish his letter.
Oh, okay. I don't know if we still have Mo on the line, do we? Okay, so then, do you want to take two minutes?
Yes, I'm still on the line. Hold on.
Go ahead, Mo, you have one more minute.
All right. Black administrators in SUSD met with Superintendent Aguilar on June 6th to discuss their concerns about the increase in racist acts at sites. I think I'm having feedback. Give me a second. Hold on, give me just a minute. Just get this fixed. Sorry about that. They sat down and they discussed the fact that only a few white administrators were offered opportunities to join committees that were focused on reopening schools, an opportunity not extended to black administrators, and to offer sustainable solutions to our concerns. To this date, there's been no zero follow-up from Superintendent Aguilar, and collectively, we're concerned that SUSD is one of the few urban school districts that does not have an IAS as part of the cabinet, which marginalizes opportunities for principals' voices to be heard by the cabinet. So, for the reasons above, they're asking for Dr. Mackey and Dr. Sims to be reinstated, transparency on the decision to release them, since there's funding available for their positions next school year, a complete independent investigation of the process district administrators use to invite administrators into committees, and a complete independent investigation on the promotion practices of district administration. We also want a complete investigation on the working condition of those who report directly to the CIO and work with the CIO. And, you know, there's an opportunity for current school administrators of color and administrators of color who have left SUSD to share their concerns about their experience with racism and the lack of support from district administration to counter blatant racist acts.
Thank you, Mr. Kashmiri.
At the next BIPOC affinity group to hear the lived experiences of administrators of color. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And please submit your letter as well to the board. We appreciate it. All right, Kenya, you have two minutes.
Thank you so much. I'm just going to reiterate basically what Mo just read. Two IASs of color are being asked to resign or leave this school district, and as a person of color, as a black woman who has two children of color who are black and Latinx, I am horrified by what is happening to them. I just want to remind the board the fact that it has been well-publicized that a teacher was using the N-word in her classroom. And apparently, this is not the first time that this incident happened. It's happened previously, but instead of addressing the issue, which I did get the letter that the school district is addressing the issue, had leadership been in place to actually address the issue, like, for instance, IASs of color, principals of color, maybe issues or incidents like this would not occur. I have seen, in the years that I've been in this school district, I don't know how many women of color, particularly Latinx and black women who have left this school district running because they are interested in purposely serving students who are marginalized. So, I'm calling on this board right now to rescind their vote, and there is funding available to rehire these two women along with other teachers, classified staff, who have been pink-slipped in the time that we have been in this pandemic. So, in order, if you're really committed to increasing outcomes for students, for BIPOC students specifically, then you're going to hire more IASs, principals of color, classified staff, teachers of color. And so, that's what I'm calling on this board to do right now, to please rescind your vote, take action, and make a commitment to our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenya. And if you know any of those other incidences, if you could please email me or your board member, that would be fantastic. Thank you. Next speaker.
Anna Mullander.
Good evening, school board members and superintendent. I think that we can all agree that leadership matters, that children, the children in our schools, the children across the country need to see people who look like them in leadership positions. It's something that I think we've all faced, and especially in this last year as we've all turned to our work in anti-racism. But this district is not transparent in how it's hiring and releasing people of color from important roles in the district. We need greater transparency. We need far fewer rumors. We need to have more and more people who are impacted by these decisions as part of the decision-making process. When you release two women of color who are highly qualified from their positions, it raises a lot of questions. But then, when you look at the statistical anomaly that of 23 administrators that have left over the last two years, 18 of them are people of color, that's when we know that there's a problem. You can't explain that away, and we need to get to work.
Wrap it up.
Okay. So, I'm calling on this board to reinstate the two superintendents and to do the hard work of looking at why statistically this district has treated people of color so badly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Katie Hymanz.
Hi, Ms. Hymanz, can you hear us?
Yes, sorry, I was having toolbar fakes.
It's all right, go ahead.
I am calling tonight as a parent within the district, and I also just want to say that I am a, I have spent the last 15 years as a white person working to really unpack what it means to be a white person in society. And I am very disturbed to hear that all that is going on within our district. We are relatively new to the district, and I'm really calling on the board to look at this reinstatement of these positions that have been let go, but then look at the larger structural issues because I find it upsetting to be continuing to hear the commitment to anti-racism by a district that continues to have these issues over and over. There needs to be staff on, at the district level, that are devoted, a whole team devoted to anti-racism if we're really going to make this happen, and have ongoing training for all staff, not just a drop-in-the-bucket training. Like I said, I've been working at it for 15 years and still have more to learn. It needs to be an ongoing training and supportive effort for all staff members in looking at the structural issues, having people who are dedicated to picking apart why these things are happening and what is our hiring efforts? What is our hiring process? All of the different processes, there needs to be staff.
If you could please wrap it up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Erica Harmeau.
Go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Member Pritchett. So, like Anna Mullander said, leadership matters. And, Member Pritchett, it's not helpful when you don't read the letter and tell Mo Kashmiri to email it when it's already been emailed. And then, when you tell Kenya to talk to her board member who falls asleep in these board meetings, 18 out of 23 BIPOC leaders who are superintendents or area supervisors have left. They've resigned. There's no accountability when it comes to being committed to addressing and interrupting inequities that you guys say that you want to do. When a teacher is comfortable saying the N-word, but not the word fuck, that's a problem. The response that Dr. Mackey and the other woman got, the district said they were going in a different direction. And so, my question is, is what direction? I think you guys have a responsibility to tell the public and the students and the parents, what direction are you guys going in if not, if you guys are letting go of BIPOC leaders who are committed to addressing and interrupting inequities in the district?
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Jennifer Herring. Leanna Sanchez.
Can you hear me? Yes, thank you. Good evening, my name is Leanna Sanchez. I'm a teacher in SCUSD. As a first-generation Latin American woman, I have sought out the mentorship, guidance, and support of BIPOC leadership and staff. We are far and few between in SCUSD. I know our students and families look for us, too. Representation matters. Multiculturalism is an asset. I'm committed to supporting efforts to recruit, retain, and promote BIPOC educators in service to our students and community. I urge the board to investigate current practices regarding hiring, reassignment, discipline, and dismissal. I hope that we can be a place where staff, students, and communities of the global majority thrive. I would appreciate the opportunity to further discuss my experience and observations as a teacher of color in SCUSD with the superintendent and board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Next speaker.
Terrence Gladney.
Good evening. When I tapped out of the last board meeting on Thursday, I didn't get the opportunity to express my surprise that another BIPOC administrator, Ms. Govea, who I had a direct relationship when my son was a student at Kennedy, had also resigned. And this followed, this is right on the heels of Mr. McFaul leaving Einstein. You know, you guys have the opportunity to follow up, whether through social media, through direct relationships, on administrators, and find out with your own exit interview process why they're leaving. The established pattern of multiple people of color in leadership positions that have voluntarily exited the district is a problem. And the fact that we have two IASs who are asking to stay, you guys should be jumping at the opportunity to capture these people before they follow the established pattern and leave the district. We need to serve our students. You know, I've seen Board Member Rhodes, you know, at some of the graduation ceremonies talking about bilingualism as a superpower. You guys have your own superpowers, but it seems like you guys are handing them over to the superintendent. I would just like to remind you guys that he reports to you. You guys are not beholden to give your powers away to him. You guys are supposed to give your powers, if anything, to our children. Thank you.
Karen, if you could please wrap it up.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Clarissa White.
Hi, everybody, my name is Claire White. I am a special education teacher in foreign region in Elk Grove Unified School District, as well as a delegate to the California Democratic Party. I am calling because I work at a Title I school. I know there are many Title I schools in SCUSD. I actually did my student teaching at Caleb Greenwood for about a year. And I know from my teaching that for students to have an actual shot at maximizing their academic outcomes, having their mental health taken care of, all of these really important things, in order for them to have the best shot and the best opportunities, they need teachers who are committed to understanding their biases, which is why we need to have implicit bias trainings for teachers, staff, administrators. Our students can't be successful without this. Our teachers and admin cannot be successful in guiding student growth if they lack the nuanced skills to examine their bias perspectives. We've seen the negative repercussions.
Please wrap it up.
We've seen the negative repercussions of white women basing decisions on assumptions about black, brown, and indigenous peoples. Lastly, how can we tell the students the sky is the limit when we oust qualified black and brown leaders who are committed to them? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Coach Sims.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, very good. Yeah, I just want to just address the board as Mr. Aguilar, as well as Christine Biede. I think it's just wrong, unjust. Is Olga and Dr. Mackey are quality people, stellar throughout the district? The parents, everybody really, truly believes in them. The justice is just not right. There's no explanation for this, not even, not even an explanation to Olga. Board, 7-0 to release them. Did you check on anything? This is, this is what I'm saying. It's unbelievable that we have to even go through this. But no one, she doesn't even know why. And this is what the problem is. This has got to stop. And yes, we do have a lot of people leaving, but this is unnecessary. We need great people to stay with us, to stay in the program. And that's what, Mr. Wu, could you listen? Look at me when I'm speaking. I don't know what the heck. This is exactly what I'm talking about.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. Thank you, Coach Sims.
We can't lose people like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hell.
Next speaker.
Gary.
Hi there. Yeah, so my name's Sasal Agirre. I am, or was, a student of CSUSD. And I have a lot of family who are in the same school district. So, it really tugs at my heart when I see, right, that 18 of our 25 admin, you know, folks who have left those positions are people of color. 18 of 23, sorry. So, that's an even higher ratio. And that, to me, right, is very symbolic of an issue, an issue of, I would say, an un-inclimate work environment, maybe even a hostile work environment for our people of color. And as, I would just, I would love to be able to see a lot more inclusion and just the, some motivation, right, from our board in seeking to understand why this is happening, right, and take some action.
If you could wrap it up.
Yeah. I'd like to see some action taken on ensuring that we don't see this type of exodus of the folks that we need, right, of people of color in these positions for our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Alma Lopez. Ingrid Hutchins.
Good evening, my name is Ingrid Hutchins, and I'm a BIPOC second-grade teacher in our district. In my 20 years with SCUSD, I have yet to receive a genuine, solid training in implicit bias unless I sought it out and paid for it on my own. Our district needs to prioritize implicit bias training not only for their employees, but for our board trustees as well. Those who write resolutions, create policies, and provide oversight should be aware of their own biases and how they impact the decisions being made, their resolve to listen to the voices of the historically underrepresented, and the way they interact with others. If our district is serious about combating racism, we must all be committed to doing the work. Furthermore, the board and superintendent must stop the systemic purge of BIPOC leaders who want to do the work of equity. Dr. Mackey and Dr. Sims are released without cause. Our district is losing two highly qualified BIPOC leaders who weren't afraid to hold district administrators accountable by questioning the outcomes of historically marginalized groups. In the past two years, 18 out of 23 administrators who have left our district were BIPOC leaders. What does that say about our district?
Please wrap it up.
I'm almost done. What does that say about your leadership when despite the fact that we've already lost an abundance of BIPOC leaders that you're willing to cut two more who are doing the important anti-racist work that we need? Using catchphrase phrases means nothing when your actions tell us otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
John Doe.
Ms. Doe, are you there?
Pass. Pass.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mo. Next speaker.
Manuel Buenrostro.
Oh, hey, can you hear me? Hi. Hi, board members. This is Manuel Buenrostro. I'm a concerned community member. And after looking at the staff attrition numbers, especially for staff of color, I think we can all agree that there is reflection and improvements that need to be made immediately at the district. It is for this reason that when we look at the dismissal and attrition of staff of color, it is concerning. It speaks to district culture, including how the district hires, how it retains, and how it promotes in its practices. For this reason, it is imperative that the district sets a goal to establish mandatory training for all staff focused on unconscious bias, cultural relevance, and on how the dominant culture impacts our students, staff, and community. This training must be mandatory for all staff that interact with children and the community. Moreover, I'm asking the board to conduct a review, or maybe through a study session focused on hiring and promotion practices to ensure proper screening of staffs, to ensure that all staff have an equity mindset and beliefs that are assets-based. All of our staff interacting with students should have these beliefs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ursula Dewitt.
Good evening, trustees and superintendent. My name is Ursula Dewitt, and I am a member of the Black Parallel School Board. The Black Parallel School Board has informed the district time and time again, year after year, that we are gravely concerned about the staffing challenges and overwhelming racism within SAC City Unified School District that continues to traumatize and harm black scholars, pushing them out of the opportunity of an education and into the school-to-prison pipeline. Why not apply the punitive practices used for black scholars to teachers and administrators? Pull them out of class. Suspend them. Expel them for the real bad behavior and racism this district chooses to be implicit about. Black Parallel School Board wants transparency regarding the hiring and retention of staff of color. SAC City has neglected to retain far too many black educators during the pandemic. We always hear about the budget deficit. But when are we going to hear about the black educator deficit? We need an independent audit of the practices used to promote and to provide promotional opportunities for all staff members. And lastly, don't just look into or consider, but do implement intentional anti-racist training for all staff before the start of school in the fall of 2021 using the help of your allies, the Black Parallel School Board, Brown Issues, and SAC Act. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Maria Hernandez.
Maria, you're on mute. There you go. Go ahead.
Buenas tardes, miembros del Consejo Directivo y Superintendente. Mi nombre es Maria Hernandez. Como miembro de la comunidad por más de 20 años, es sumamente importante lo siguiente. Queremos transparencia en la contratación y retención de administradores y administradoras de color. Exigimos que reintegren a las dos asistentes del Superintendente de Instrucción que fueron dados de baja este año. ¿Cómo es posible que las únicas administradoras de color fueron dados de baja? Así como el Consejo Directivo votó para extender el contrato del Superintendente para no interrumpir la educación escolar de nuestros estudiantes, es igual de importante que estas dos asistentes del Superintendente, la doctora Sims y la doctora Mackey, sean reintegradas para mantener la continuidad que merecen nuestros estudiantes. En particular porque estas dos representan la diversidad de la mayoría de nuestro distrito. Nuestros estudiantes y sus padres merecen ser representados en este distrito escolar. Pedimos una auditoría independiente de las prácticas utilizadas para promover y proporcionar oportunidades de promoción para los administradores. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Next speaker. Katie Maple.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Katie.
Oh, sorry. It kept unmuting me. Or it kept muting me. Sorry about that. Good evening. I'm here today to express my deep concern for the release of two educated and experienced administrators, Dr. Mackey and Dr. Sims, and the implication it has for the district. I believe the stated goals of the district are to hire and retain BIPOC administrators and teachers, but we are falling short. In order to meet these goals, it is essential that we be transparent in the hiring and release processes and that anti-racism training be implemented for everyone, not just those at the top. And we ask that you reinstate these administrators immediately and work with the community to create transparency. I think that this is so important for people in the community and for our children. As Anna said, being able to see someone that looks like you makes you believe that you can achieve that. And so I hope that this is something that we want to work towards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
David Davis. That is the last final public comment.
I had two that were in the pack. Sidney Jaccori and Rose McCullough for those two that were given time to Kenya Martinez. Okay.
Rose withdrew, and Sid gave his time to Mohammed.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we did not skip over anyone. Perfect. No other public comments with that. We'll move into closed. Calling back to order, this meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education. Item 5.0, Special Presentation 5.1, Approved Resolution Number 3212, Resolution on Use and Expectations of One-Time Funds for Personal Costs to Address the COVID-19 Pandemic and Post-Pandemic Needs. Member Garcia.
Yes, thank you. So we're back with this resolution for action. And this is a resolution that explicitly and clearly states the use and expectations of one-time funds for personnel costs. It's very narrow in terms of its application. It strictly relates to positions that will be funded through these one-time costs. And I want to thank Board Member Murawski for the additional clarifying language that she offered, as well as specifying the date as to when the superintendent or designee shall present an action plan to the board, no later than December 2023, to inform the board as to how we are going to move forward in terms of, you know, our ability to retain any, if not all, of these positions. So, and that's it.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Member Garcia. We have two, I'm sorry, we have four live comments on this agenda item.
First is Mo Cashmary. Is our sound on?
Hello, this is Mo Cashmary. I haven't been able to hear anything for the last four minutes, so can you come back to me? I don't know if there's something wrong with the sound.
Okay. Sorry, we're working on the sound right now. Are you able to hear me right now, Mo?
Yes, I can hear you right now.
Okay. Do you need us to repeat the resolution language?
I mean, I heard LaTice start talking, then she stopped.
Oh, okay.
I heard about through two sentences up to where she talked about, I don't remember exactly, but.
Okay. Do you want to just repeat in short?
Sure, I'll keep it short. Again, we're back with this resolution for action. It's a resolution that specifically and clearly states the use and expectations of one-time dollars for purposes of funding positions in the district, so.
Thank you again, Member Garcia. All right. Mo, go right ahead.
I just want to say, yeah, I just want to say I'm in favor. That's it. Keep it quick.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Terrence Gladney.
Good evening again. I just don't see any of the community feedback reflected in the resolution. I know that you guys want to keep it loose, but the problem with keeping it loose is this doesn't tell me if the funding is going to be directed to school sites, the people that are closest to our students. It doesn't tell me if you guys decide, you know what, we need more technology or technology support. That technically could mitigate the loss, but there's no definition within this resolution. And I know you guys don't want to get all the way down to brass tacks, but give us some transparency of where the dollars will end up. There's too many times where we leave these things open-ended, and then it comes to a budget cycle, and we say, where did the dollars actually go? And we have no way to track it. So if you guys start with a template that at least reassures us at the school sites and those who, you know, are entrusting our students to you, then we at least have some sort of clarity. But just to say positions could be anything. It could be a janitor, could be a gardener, it could be someone to clean you guys' seats on the dais, it could be a bus driver, you know. Is anyone more important than another? But we don't have any sort of template that says, you know, who were the most affected students that we're going to target? And these are the positions that we're going to fund to make sure that we actually mitigate the loss and we're most efficient with our dollars. I'm just looking for a little bit more transparency, and that is in you guys' hands to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next speaker.
Julius Osborn.
Recording in progress.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Go ahead.
All right. So I just want you all to know that I'm speaking on behalf of the African-American Advisory Board. And I'm coming here tonight to state that we demand the removal of Catherine Sanders for her use of racist terms. I think you all are aware of the incident that I'm speaking of at Kit Carson. In the recording, we heard Catherine use the word harm. And I want you all to think about that word and make sure that you think about the harm and trauma caused to the students. The students who were there who heard the incident firsthand, and now the trauma that is being caused to other community members as they hear about this incident. And if there's harm and trauma caused, we need to focus on healing. And what we want to make sure you all consider is, we want to make sure that the healing process is culturally responsive, and culturally responsive support systems. And then, we want to make sure that there is organizations that are Black and African-American organizations who are called to help support this type of culturally responsive supports. And in regards to Resolution 3212, we have an expectation that the use of one-time funds for personal costs to address the COVID-19 pandemic and post-pandemic needs focus on mandatory professional development for all staff. And we want it to include anti-racism training, anti-bias training, and without the opportunity for staff to opt out. And furthermore, you'll receive more communication from us with more detailed response. I know I have a short amount of time. And also, we have further demands that will help remedy this situation and other situations that cause harm and trauma to our students, and other demands that will help improve the outcomes for Black and African-American students. Thank you.
Thank you, Julius. Next speaker.
Daniel Darby.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. I have a couple of issues regarding around this resolution. I heard at length the discussion at the prior meeting about the concerns about using this one-time money to hire people and then having to release them in the future. Not once did I hear anything about trying to improve the productivity of people currently at the district office. And that does not mean that we have to work them harder, but the system and processes within the district are inefficient and can be improved upon such that we don't have to needlessly hire some people. So we have benefits that you could apply there. In addition, in this resolution, it talks about spending the one-time money. There are multiple paragraphs about spending the one-time money. But I fail to see any part of the resolution that truly discusses the accountability of that money being spent, and how we're going to keep track of the accountability of that money that is being spent. And because this is such a large windfall, I am gravely concerned that this money is going to be misspent. And I feel an accountability piece is exceptionally necessary in this resolution. Instead of just talking about just spending the money, we should have some type of accountability here somewhere, not just talking about spending. And with that, I would like to say that I fully agree with the other public live comments that I have heard so far and the written public comment that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Next speaker.
That was the final speaker.
That was the final speaker. Okay. I'll open this up for board dialogue. Member Murawski.
Thank you. Thanks again, Member Garcia, for bringing this forward. And full support, happy to move at the appropriate time. And just as some of our community members spoke about fiscal accountability and transparency being really important, that is something that's very critical and near and dear to my heart. I just wanted to maybe have the opportunity for either the superintendent to address, you know, that this particular resolution is very narrow and specific to the use of one-time funds for personnel, as that has been an issue in the past of not being able to, you know, really afford to keep the personnel on when hiring based on one-time funds. So that's like the very narrow issue that this resolution addresses. But that's not the end of the transparency and accountability conversation around these COVID funds. So if just, you know, if a quick moment could be had for that, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Member Murawski. I think you did characterize this as a resolution that is just speaking to one aspect of the board's expectations and direction to me and to our team about reporting back to you as it relates specifically to using one-time funds to establish new positions to meet the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students, their mental health needs as well, knowing and fully recognizing that through other actions that the board has taken, it is important to make clear to me and to our staff, as well as to our community, what those expectations are for using one-time funds to fund full-time positions to meet the needs of our students. We acknowledge, or the board has acknowledged that this is not a healthy practice. And therefore, the resolution lays out very clearly your expectations for continued monitoring and reporting back to you and to our community of the possibilities of creating a budget structure that would allow us to maintain those positions without the need to rely on one-time funds.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. I just, I also wanted to emphasize that this is not the end of the conversation in that we will have additional reporting and transparency and accountability around the particular expenditures that I think is what people are asking for, that we will have, you know, like we talked about at the last meeting, a report that stitches together all of the expenditures around the goals that we have as a district, how the expenditures are related to those goals, how we're moving the district forward. So I just wanted to reemphasize that that's not in this resolution. It's not meant to be, but that is also forthcoming as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Murawski. And yes, that's a good reminder that we will definitely be working on this as a fluid and coming back and having regular updates. Is there any other member?
I also wanted to note, I agree, obviously accountability assessments, also working in line with our LCAP to make sure that this is not just a one-time conversation. Again, it's going back, it's working with different individuals. And I really appreciated in the public comments, you know, making sure that we, what we're hiring for is that we're very clear with these expiration dates. And hopefully, the goal is to work and to extend those, but be very upfront and clear with our community. And hopefully, we can retain and get some great workforce for these because it's really important for our students that we use these funds to make an impact when they do return for the next few years.
Thank you. All right. With that, I also want to thank Member Garcia for your work on this. And it's very much needed. And I just want you to know how much we appreciate your time that you spent working us through this. Member Phillips.
I just want to make clear. So this is a document that says, this is what we're thinking about doing, or what we are going to do, actually. But we're not being specific about positions that are being hired for. So we're going to be coming in later to explain what, I guess, what actions are going to take place based on this resolution.
And some of those positions we spoke about at the last board meeting.
Right. So.
Okay. I'm good.
You sure?
I just, yeah, I just needed, I just wanted to make sure, I'm like, because it is vague intentionally, but specific, kind of, sort of, that we're going to get updates that really explain more of what the actions are going to be taking place.
Definitely.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Member Murawski, I know you wanted to move this.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Oh, Isa, we miss you. Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett.
Hi.
Member Murawski.
Hi.
Member Wu.
Hi.
Member Garcia.
Hi.
Member Villa. Member Rhodes.
Hi.
Member Phillips.
Fantastic. Thank you. Item 5.2, Update on Student Common Assessments. Ms. Bieda and Mr. Harris.
Thank you, President Pritchett. I'll just start the presentation. First of all, thanking and acknowledging yet again, another amazing cross-functional effort by our team. And I just want to recognize that from my end, and I'm sure that you will do the same as our Board of Education. This is a presentation that is intended to give the Board of Education a high-level overview of the importance of student common assessments. It is sort of a learning session. It's an information item for you. We will welcome any questions that you might have, technical or otherwise. We have a lot of staff that are on the presentation and will be speaking to you as well. We will also give you a brief update on where we stand with respect to the analyses related to our end-of-year common assessments that were administered as part of the expectations from CDE. Also give you examples of the kind of things that we think are possible when you have access to this kind of information at the level that we are starting to see and that we will share with you and our community. And finally, I've asked our in-house legal counsel, Mr. Bozio, to just give you an update on where we stand with respect to our efforts to work with our labor partner, SCTA, to come to an agreement for the schedule of assessments for the next academic year. So again, thank you to the staff for their amazing work across the entire district. And I hope that you will appreciate their efforts, board members.
We're President Pritchett, Board Members of the County of Aguilar. My name is Vincent Harris. I'm the Chief of Continuous Improvement and Accountability for SAC City Unified School District. Actually, Superintendent has basically framed the outline of the presentation, so you can actually go to the next slide. Ultimately, as we talk about any data point in our system, it really is the ways in which we look to measure the impact of disrupting inequities in our system. And so obviously, seeing the impact of student learning, seeing differences in student outcomes is one of the ways in which we're able to confront and disrupt inequities in our pursuit to ensure all of our students perform at a grade level. And we know that's important because as we think about the guiding principle, really, it's the access to academic language, the access to grade-level performance that really serves the strongest emphasis to give students an opportunity not to just graduate, but really to graduate the greatest number of post-secondary choices and wide range of options so that students have the widest set of opportunities as they leave us. And of course, obviously, as we think about our system, every system is purposely designed to get the results that it gets. And so ultimately, we're trying to create a system that's designed for all students to be performing at grade level. With that, I'll actually transition the presentation to our math coordinator, Makila Fitzer, and she'll take us forward.
Thank you. So I am Makila Fitzer. Hi, I'm your mathematics coordinator. And tonight, I would like to present to you just a little bit about common district assessment and really look at how they are an essential best practice. If you do one more click, you're going to see different documents pop up. These are the various frameworks that we look to for state-level guidance, from the math framework to dyslexia guidelines that all funnel down into a multi-tiered system of supports. And I say we look to them because all of these documents guide us to acknowledge that assessments are best when they're part of a comprehensive, a coherent, and continuous system of assessment that provides ongoing information for teachers, leaders, and families throughout the school year. They also tell us that district common assessments are a critical part of an integrated data collection system. An integrated data collection system includes assessments like state tests, as well as universal screening, diagnostics, progress monitoring, teacher observations at the site. All of these is to inform decisions about a tiered support placement. So we go to the next slide. I'd like to frame this with thinking about it, the whys. We have five whys that really underpin the common assessments. So this first one here, what we're looking at is monitoring student progress toward grade-level readiness and achievement, and doing this by informing students, parents, teachers, administrators, the superintendent, and the Board of Education about how our students are doing. I also want to say that common assessments are one of the many data points which inform students' present levels of performance. And this is really important when we're talking about student success teams who are monitoring the academic interventions, as well as individualized education plan teams who are monitoring progress on academic goals. So these district common assessments- So these district common assessments are critical for all of these teams and all of these stakeholders. On the next one, we're looking at our second kind of why. In consideration of this, it's about informing teaching and learning, and critical here is about with a guaranteed and viable curriculum. We are looking at this, we consider four questions. These questions come from the professional learning community, our PLC world, and effective teams ask these questions regularly, consistently. They want to know, what do we expect our students to learn? We have national guidance that point to priority standards, and this is what we want to assess on. We have scope and sequence documents that lay out a line to the district-adopted instructional materials, the sequence of instruction for our teachers to use as a guide. We want to know, how will we know if they're learning? Well, this is the common assessment piece that's being used. How do we respond if they don't learn? Well, we need to know that so that we can intervene and really accelerate students to get to that grade-level learning. And how will we respond if they already know it? Well, extension, enrichment opportunities. And imagine doing this as an individual teacher on your own versus the power of a common measure that says we need to do this as a team, we need to do this at school site or as a district. The next one, the third why that underpins in, is about providing schools and teacher teams with regular, up-to-date, objective data as we engage in cycles of continuous improvement. That need for objective data from the same measure for each classroom across grade levels across courses is really important here, and we all know that we cannot improve what we cannot measure. The fourth underpinning, or the fourth why here, we're looking at, is about identifying students for interventions and support, which is a part of a successful and essential multi-tiered system supports. We need to be asking the questions about which students are meeting standards with the Tier One instruction. What about students needing Tier Two small group instruction? And how about Tier Three with individualized support? And further, we need to be considering which students are not making adequate progress in their learning and may benefit from participating in special education assessments to determine eligibility. These are all part of the whys for common assessments. Our last one, the fifth one, has to do with informing programmatic decisions, including program or student program placement, as well as program effectiveness. If you look at that list there, English learner redesignation, mandated, you need to have information to be able to do this, the gifted and talented education eligibility, as well as what we're in right now, information about eligibility for our expanded learning summer program. All of these are reasons why we need to continue and bolster our district common assessments. But I want you to understand too, where a district common assessment sits in a range, if you will, a continuum of assessments. So I'm going to pass this to my colleague, Jeanette Schroeder, who is your English Language Arts Coordinator. She's going to talk a little bit about where these district common assessments fit in that range of assessments. Jeanette?
Thanks, Makila. If we can move to the next slide, please. So Makila showed us some research documents where we gather our information for our assessments. So we are lifting this particular figure out of the California English Language Arts, English Language Development Framework. It is actually in Chapter Eight, it is Figure 8.4, and it really represents assessment cycles by purpose. So these are all the assessments you would see in education. Notice the progression from the short cycle to the long cycle. Short cycles are in the classroom assessments, they're done daily by teachers as they deliver lessons, they're done minute by minute as teachers are monitoring how students are absorbing the learning or not absorbing the learning, and they may make adjustments in their lessons. And then we have our weekly ones that are assessing a little bit more after time has taken over. And then notice our large-scale summative assessments. Those are the CASPs, those are the assessments we give at the end of the school year to really measure how students are performing, learning all the standards of their grade level. And we're going to actually take a look at the medium cycle on the next slide, because this is really where the district common assessments live. So if we can move to the next slide, please. So a medium cycle assessment, too far, there we go, back when. They look like the same, but the titles are different. So we did want to amplify the medium cycle assessments on purpose, because these are the interim assessments. These are assessments that are done often three times a year, they are, there can be diagnostic, so they can measure what students have learned and what they already know. They're a little bit more evaluative than those day-by-day assessments I just mentioned. They really allow us to monitor how students are performing individually, or how classes, or how grade levels, or how schools are performing in learning towards meeting those standards that will be assessed on that summative assessment at the end of the year. They also address longer-term goals than those short-cycle assessments. And these are actually really important, because if we wait till the end of the year to measure how students are performing, we can't, we're going to have to be reactive every time. So if we have these common district interim assessments that we do, beginning of year, middle of year, end of year, we can be proactive about how we approach our teaching and learning, how we develop our professional learning, so we're all making sure that we are preparing to enable our kids to perform at the best they possibly can. So with medium cycle assessments, on the next slide, we can answer these questions. What have students learned so far? And looking at the data from a medium cycle assessment, we can really measure what have my classes and students learned so far? What do I no longer need to focus my attention on? Who is on track and who is not on track at meeting those standards right now at this point in time? Because the kids that are meeting those standards, that core instruction is working, that Tier One instruction is working for them, but the students that are not meeting those standards, they need some Tier Two attention, and interim assessments allow us to identify those kids. What are the strengths in my teaching and in my colleagues' teaching? What are the strengths of the students that are performing? Also, what strengths do I need to improve in my instruction? And finally, I think the most important one is where are individuals performing, or are my student groups performing? Who am I not lifting up, and what needs to be done to support these kids? These are all questions that medium cycle assessments, such as interims, can answer. They can answer them too at the end, but it's a little too late, we just look at it then. So I do want to point out, tonight, we're not looking at medium cycle assessments, unfortunately. We're looking at some, we're looking at the summative assessment. So please know that it's important that you know that tonight's assessment data came from an assessment that many kids in SAC City had never done before. So this is really a snapshot in time for how students performed on a new assessment for many of them. We don't have any historical data to compare, to show progress, to show if people are, students are improving. And I just want to remind you that in an ideal system for assessments, we have coherent, continuous, systemic assessments. And now I'm going to pass it back to Vincent.
Thank you, Ms. Schroeder. And actually, you know, as Superintendent mentioned at the beginning, it really ties with what Ms. Schroeder just spoke to, this notion of what can we do when we have viable and sustainable data? And so, you know, tonight you'll have one, you'll see several slides that give you one way in which we frame the data. This is one way potentially going forward, we'll be able to frame it as well. This is a snapshot from our Performance and Target Action Index, which is really meant to be a way to frame data in kind of a storyboard framework, kind of tying to the questions you just saw on the prior slide. It's meant to kind of take something like our conversations around grade-level readiness as we have definitions that are viable and sustainable in data that, of course, trends over a period of time, really asks important questions that you just saw, right? This notion of who's on grade level as you do work our way left to right, who's growing towards grade-level status, and who's retaining grade level? Because obviously, you know, we want to be in tune with students who year-to-year might fluctuate being on grade level and not on grade level, and then most importantly, thinking about where do we see variation in, on all of the achievement gap between students. All this culminating with the essence of students who are within our early identification intervention system at the green zone, which is the building that suggests that students are viable across all the key elements of our EIS system, which is academics, behavior, and attendance. If we go to the next slide, please? And so lifting out one of the components, which you just saw, this notion of students being at the green zone, you see here the detail behind how we actually calculate the numbers. Tonight, we won't go through these calculations, other than emphasize that as we think about looking at data, Superintendent has mentioned, by student by need, by inequity, this is data that we can look at, of course, at a whole district level, and then at a site level, and then ultimately at a student level, and by student group level. And so these are ways in which we'll be able to use our sustainable data as it relates to assessments to get into more deeply rooted questions about who is on grade level, who's not on grade level, and then think more deeply about what are the things necessary to strengthen those students' performance in the long run, all of our students are approaching and hopefully sustaining grade-level performance. With that, we'll dig deeper into the end-of-year assessment results, and I'll pass the presentation to Dr. Ed Eldridge.
Good evening. Next slide, please. As a reminder, during the 2019-20 school year, California did not require school districts to administer year-end assessments, including the state's Californian assessment of student performance and progress, otherwise on its CAF program. And that included, that all school districts not administer the FBAK as well due to the onset of COVID-19 pandemic that forced all districts, including SAC City, into an emergency learning online environment. Next slide, please. So in response to the ongoing pandemic, the State Board of Education allowed flexibility with regard to end-of-year assessments. Now, as mentioned before, that's what you're going to be looking at tonight in terms of the results. These end-of-year assessments were administered in FBAK ELA for grades 3, 2, 8, and 11, and also to provide our students an additional opportunity where possible to be reclassified, our English learner students be classified as, be classified as fluent and proficient. We also tested non-FBAK grades in grades K-1 and 2, and also allowed anything grades 9 and 10 to take the FBAK. Next slide. And looking at the results from our year-end assessments, you'll see that these assessments we opened up the window for our school, for our sites to start taking these in mid-May, they're allowed to take the assessments to June 2007, June 17, 2021. And all, approximately 70% of the students who were in grades K-11 participated in the ELA assessment, you can see that on the left-hand side at the bottom there, and you will see that our participation kind of fluctuated by grade level. In elementary grades, the participation ranged between 85 and 93%, and the upper-grade levels were significantly lower with the top grade, 76% students, excuse me, 76% seventh grade students taking the test. For those students who did participate, a total of 37% exceeded or met standards as indicated on the, on the right-hand side, on the right corner. Performance was uneven across grade levels as well, as we saw in grades K and 11, had the highest percent of students exceeding or meeting standards at 58% and 64% respectively. Conversely, we saw that students in grades 4, 6, they appeared to display a greater need for intervention, with the percentage of students exceeding or meeting standards ranging between 22 and 29%. Just by way, if we go through these slides, you'll see the color coding kind of keys you in, green is showing you where students are performing or participation was highest, and then now you see the yellow and red is showing you where their participation and/or performance was lower. So that's kind of the key to understand these tables. Next slide, please. When we look at participation in English Language Arts by ethnicity and race, we see that the percent of American Indian or Alaska Native and Black or African-American students tested at grades, excuse me, nine to 10 percentage points lower than our Asian, white, and students with two or more races. There was a wide variation in the performance of students as well, as we saw that 21% of African-American students and Native Hawaiian students exceeded or met standards, which were about 39 percentage points lower than their white peers, where 60% of the students met standards. Next slide, please. You also see that we provide this information by English proficiency, and when you look at the data by English proficiency, you'll see that participation was, for our FAB students, we designated fluent and proficient was lower than our students who are English-only and English learner, about 18 percentage points lower. However, a total of 58% of students in home where English was not their primary language were their IFAB. That means that English is not the primary language, but the students initially tested as fluent and proficient, 58% of these students exceeded or met the percent, excuse me, met standards by 21 percentage points as compared to 43% for our English learner students. So you'll see our IFAB 58%, and then English learner 15%, there's a 42% gap, 42 percentage point gap between our IFAB students and our English learner students. I said that right there. Next slide. This shows the information by special ed participation. Students receiving special ed services had a participation rate of 64%, as opposed to students who did not receive special ed services had a participation rate of 71%. And when we look at the results, we see that performance of 23% gap between those students who are receiving special ed and those not receiving special ed. Students who did not receive special ed, 40% of those students exceeded or met standards. Students who did receive special education services, 17% of those students exceeded or met standards. Next slide, please. When we look at the data disaggregated by socioeconomic advantage status, again, we see a difference in the participation rate, 72% of those students who were not socioeconomic advantage, sometimes we call it SED, or not socioeconomic, they were not socioeconomic advantage, 72% of those students took the test, 68% of those students who were not. But then if you look at the performance again, you will see a wide gap. So you're going to see, you're seeing gaps show up here in the data between those students who are not socioeconomic advantage and those who were, we have a 32-point gap there. Next slide, please. Now, we ran through the ELA data, the math data is very similar. Again, we have uneven performance by, uneven performance and participation by grade level. Again, we see higher participation rates at the lower grade levels, lower participation at the higher grade level. The performance data a little bit different here, the performance data, we see the highest performance at grade seven and eight, with 49 and 47% proficient. You see lower performance pretty much throughout the other grade levels, really ranging between 20% and 26% in grades three through six and 11. Next slide, please. When we look at this data, again, sorted out by ethnicity, we have uneven results again. We have the highest participation rates happening at our Asian and white students, our Asian and white student groups. More participation rates, the gap not as big, but we still have a gap with our Black, African-American students and American Indian students, 74 and 77% in terms of students tested. Even though we have 82% of all testing, we still have a gap where our Black or African-American students are, and our American Indian and Alaska natives are testing at lower rates. Looking at the performance, again, we have those gaps appearing as well. We see where our Black, African-American students, 12% are proficient, and 13% of our Native Hawaiian or, or African-American students are proficient as compared to our 48% of white students who are proficient. Again, we have significant gaps even with our Asian and our more races. So we have some huge gaps here by races in looking at our data. Next slide, please. Looking at the information by our English proficiency, we see the gaps are not limited to our ethnicity. We also have, the participation gaps are much smaller, which is good, but when we look at the performance gap, we see, again, higher gaps, a big substantial gap between our IFAB students and our English learner students. Now, I need to point out that 179 students, if you look on the left, 179 of our students were IFAB. So the number of IFAB students is not as great as you would say, for example, the 3100, more than 3100 English learner students. However, when you look at the RFAB students, we have 42% of our RFAB students, which 2100 of those students, we still have a significant gap compared to our 2100 EL students at 10% proficient. So definitely need to pay attention to that. Next slide. Looking at our special education data for math, we see, again, a gap in terms of percentage of students testing, and the gap is somewhat smaller between the, comparing English Language Arts, excuse me, for performance, where students who are not receiving special ed services, they're the 32% proficiently as opposed to 12% of the students who are. Overall numbers are not, we still need to work on the overall number at 29%, but we also need to look at that gap. And then, next slide, please. And finally, in this particular dataset, we look, the same analysis for our SED students, where we have 88% of students who are not SED participated as opposed to 80% of students who were SED, and again, we still have a significant gap there in the performance. And again, we should have a significant gap there in the performance. Next slide. Now, what's your thing up here?
Dr. Eldridge, I can just interject and just ask that we pause a little bit. I realize that I should have interjected before we began to share with the, with our board the disaggregation of the end of year assessments, just because I realized that there's been a lot of information that has been shared already with the board. I know that we're going relatively fast. We were scheduled for a one-hour presentation. We still have 34 minutes left and we're coming to the end of the presentation. And I'm reminded every once in a while that this is a lot of information. And so President Pritchard, would you like us just to complete this or do you want to just pause? And there's been sort of two really critical pieces of information shared, just background information on the importance and the value and the purpose and the why of assessments. And then a lot of information for a lot of our students related to their performance. And so we can continue and finish off and then come back in those sections or we can pause and answer questions up to this point.
Why don't we keep going with the presentation and then we can come back at the end to address all of that? Just please take notes as you're going along in the presentation.
I continue.
Go ahead.
You know what I'm going to do is I'm going to take, I'm going to take the lead there from our superintendent and I'm going to flow down here a little bit because I provided this information here as twofold, but I'm going to, I think, take a little leave here. So the information that we just shared was for our math data. So we previously shared the ELA data and then we shared our math data. And that information was put together to provide you, our board, and also our community a glimpse into the performance of our students. What you're looking at here, I'm going to slow down because this information is put together to highlight the work of a multi-year effort between various departments, our continuous improvement accountability, technology services, the academic office. I'm synchronizing the data in our information system and our visualization tools to really put enhanced what we provide our district leaders and our site leaders in terms of making sense and use of the data for improving instructional learning. So you saw the math data, this is another visualization of that math data, but this allows our district internal folks and also our site leaders to look at the same information and not have to worry about privacy rules. So for example, data that we share with you all, we don't show inside of lesson 11, right? Because we want to be concerned about student privacy. A site, a small site can run this data and have no limitations to look at their students in order to see how their students are disaggregating. So we looked at the district-wide math data and I showed you that 29% were meeting or exceeding standards. This is that exact same information. And so when a site runs this visualization in our system, they would see that 29% of their students are meeting or exceeding standards. And the same way I showed you data by grade level, the site would also see the information by grade span collapsed. So if you look in that bottom left-hand corner, it's showing you the percent of students who have exceeded or met standards by grades man. And so we typically look at grades bands K three at our primary grades. We look at grades bands four through six at our intermediate. Our seven, eight grades, our middle school grades and our high schools, nine, 12, so even if only 11th grade took it, they would still be in the nine, 12 grades band. Looking at the data this way, you can see, even though we had 29% of the students who were meeting or exceeding standards, you can see that grade seven, eight is what our highest, what we had the highest performance at, just looking at the blue bars on the left-hand side. On the right-hand side, you can see that data broken out by individual grades, excuse me, individual performance bands. So on the left-hand side, we're concerned with the students, percentage of students who are exceeding standards or meeting standards. On the right-hand side, the green lets you, excuse me, the blue lets you know how many students exceeded standards. The green lets you know the percentage of students who met standards. The yellow lets you know the percentage of students who nearly met standards. And the kind of pinkish-orange lets you know the percentage of students who did not meet standards. And so it's a way for letting our sites know, one, how many students tested and then what was the disaggregation. Now, we're concerned about the learning for all of our students, not just overall. So if you click on the next slide, and this is part of the visualization that we're making available to our users, next slide, please, you will see that on the left-hand side, the top of the slide, we have the same information broken out by individual grade, right? So now we're showing that same information by the exact grade level. Students in grade seven, students in grade eight. And then if you look right below that, we're showing that same information by each of our ethnic groups. And this information by ethnic group on the visualization for our users, it is actually sorted by performance from high to low. So our sites don't have to search, they know, okay, who is our highest performing ethnic group, right? Where are gaps? Well, in this case, as we saw before, we see that white students were the highest performance at 47.8%, nearly 48%. At the bottom, we have our African-American students, you can see that gap really closely. You can see the gap at the district level and also when sites run it, they can see it for their school. When a site run this report and because I showed at the district level here, there is a little gray bar. If you kind of look to the left, I don't have control of the mouse, but there's a little gray bar right there where it says district-wide performance, when a site runs this, they would actually see their performance compared to the district. And so it's a way of identifying where are their gaps as well as how they perform. And one more slide, that's to see that we're not only looking at this information by a grade level and race ethnicity, we're also looking at this information by our English proficiency and our other student groups. And so we have IFAP, RFAP, English-only and English learner. Again, we're showing that data broken out by performance. And then we also looking at our students who are economically disadvantaged, our foster youth, students homeless, parents and homeless, and also students with disabilities. This tool was put together, again, to help our individual site users and our district folks make sense of the information and identify where are our gaps at occurring in support of our teaching and learning. More about that, again, I have a general overview. I'm going to turn it over to our chief academic officer, Ms. Kristi Viera, because she has, she's expert on this.
That was way more than a general view, Dr. Eldridge. That was, that was exceptional. Board members and community, what I would just like to highlight first and foremost is gratitude to Dr. Eldridge and Chief Harris and the Continuous Improvement Department for their work with us as we've been moving into becoming more and more an MTSS district and having that framework really guide all of our thinking. We knew that we needed ease of use and visualization of our data for site leaders. And Dr. Eldridge just described beautifully how we can look at the reports that we saw on the previous slides and those are excellent data points and an excellent way to see data. But when you look at these slides, you can get easily a very quick snapshot to see where we are successful, for whom our work is successful, and also who are we leaving behind? Most importantly, where is that variability? You heard our coordinator, Jeanette Miss Schroeder, speak to the need for our coherent, continuous systemic assessments. What I'd also like to point out here that will be wonderful for our leaders as we move into our continued work with our ability to intervene and accelerate for students is when we have the same assessment side by side, year by year. I would like our board to remember something very important. A lot of the data that we're looking at here, we do not have for every student year by year. Some of our schools, you'll hear some of our leaders share that they've been using iReady data. And so some sites have been using iReady data and they're used to using iReady data and so are the students. But a lot of our students have never taken many of these assessments and we don't have year over year to compare to. The other thing I would caution the board to be careful about as we look at this data as our end of the year data, it's going to be very difficult for us to match this up against the last SBAK data that we took. These are not the same assessments. So as we continue to look at our data, as we continue to move forward, make decisions as with our database decision-making or MTSS framework and thought process that we're moving forward with, we want to be able to assess growth for our students. We want to know, are our programs and instructional strategies that we're working towards with students, are they working? Some of what we're getting here, it's really important to remember, and I'm going to steal a word from Miss Schroeder, this is a snapshot. It's good information and we're very, very happy to have it, especially since we have data on our kindergartners, our first graders and our second graders, we're so happy. That was, I think, one of the most joyful moments in our academic office when we knew that we would also have that data. We're so happy about that. But what we really need, if we're going to have this continuous systemic assessment, ability to watch what's happening for our kids over time and be able to intervene and not just in this summative way, because by the time you get this data at the end of the year, the students have moved on and our ability to intervene is very difficult. We need this data to be continuous and we need to be able to watch it over time to see how we are progressing and we owe it to you, to our superintendent and to our families to be able to speak to the kind of growth that we know that we can make for all of our students. And, and Dr. Eldridge, I think that would be the only piece that I would add to all the wonderful words that you already shared. And I think we're going to turn it back over now to Mr. Bozio.
Thank you, Chief Viera. Good evening, board, superintendent. I want to talk a little bit at this point about the context for our current situation in the district and some of the challenges that we face to fully realize this important work that the team has been talking about. As we've previously shared with the board back in February with another presentation on, about assessments, we referenced back to the assessment's MOU that was signed in November of 2016 by former superintendent Jose Banda. That MOU required that the district obtain agreement from SETA prior to implementing any district-initiated or district-wide assessments that are not otherwise state-mandated. And the MOU also required that the district and SETA convene an assessment committee in order to come to an agreement upon any such non-state mandated assessments that would be used to monitor student progress. Next slide, please. Ultimately, the history of that assessments committee demonstrates that it was ultimately a failure for the parties to be able to come to an agreement on a system of common assessments. The district attempted many, many occasions to convene the committee and to try to reach an agreement for a system of common assessments. But ultimately, again, that consensus was never reached during the time period between 2017 and 2019, really two and a half, almost three full academic years. Next slide, please. As the committee could not come to an agreement, ultimately, in 2019, in the spring, the district implemented some limited non-state mandated assessments for GATE testing, for English language learner assessment. And then in the fall of 2019-20, fully implemented its system of common assessments. And we've provided for you hyperlinks to the history of the communications around this issue between the parties. After the district implemented its, its common assessments, SETA did file a grievance in pointing to the assessments MOU. And in January of this year, earlier in 2021, an arbitrator found that the MOU was indeed enforceable and that it had not expired. This caused the district's system of common assessments to be put on hold at that time. Next slide. Of course, the district followed the arbitrator's decision and placed its assessments on hold, but began to, at that point, reach out to SETA to reconvene the assessments committee in order to move forward with establishing and implementing a system. Unfortunately, as we've shared earlier with, with the board back in our February presentation, we have not yet been able to reconvene that committee. SETA has not accepted the dates proposed by the district throughout various communications sent by the district in January, February, April, and again, just recently in June, where the district has again invited SETA to, to reconvene that important committee, continue with this important work. Next slide, please. Again, we're hopeful that the committee will meet this summer imminently in order to, to begin these 21, 22 school year with a, with a system and a plan for common assessments, informative assessments in place early in the school year. Now, finally bringing this back to the board's role in this process, we have board bylaws and best practices on this slide. It focuses, as the board can see, on the best interests of students, their academic performance, their learning needs. Board bylaw 9005, 9000, as well as best practices discussed in the governance core reading. Also note, board bylaw 9000 that specifically focuses in on the board's role in monitoring student achievement and program effectiveness. With that, that concludes our presentation. And I know that the group is here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. And we have two live comments on this before we get to board discussion.
First is Mo Cashmary.
Hi, this is Mo Cashmary. I wanted to speak up and say I support the idea of there being a joint committee on assessments. The teachers are already tested out, the students are tested out. We know what the problem is, we know what the data is going to show. The data is going to show that folks of color and folks that are highly socially, economically disadvantaged have an, have an opportunity gap. And we need to address that by dramatically bringing in resources to bring it up. We don't need to spend all our time talking about more tests that aren't going to help and generate any useful data for the folks at the sites. We, they're the experts, we need to involve them if we ever want to be successful. This is just another example of the district trying to do top-down management that doesn't work, right? The arbitrator ruled it was clear and obvious, duh, that you need to come up with the agreement with the parties. The district is undermining the faith in their labor partners and they're building a system based on the old model of instead of education being a lighting of a fire about curiosity, instead it becomes just a game of numbers and statistics and being able to move people on. That doesn't, these assessments don't inspire kids, these assessments don't help them grow. There are certain key measures we should be looking at, like third-grade reading levels, but that's not what we're spending our time talking about. I support less tests, less of this, this stuff. And we want to make sure that our teachers and our students have the flexibility to really learn and explore and have a well-rounded education. For example, I would again look at the Swedish system as an example. They don't do all this Americanized testing stuff. This is all stuff from corporate America, right? We know what it's all going to show, it's going to show, we need dramatic help for all of our students that have those opportunity gaps. We need to look at them with a whole child approach. And that's why I'm very disappointed that the district did not accept SETA's proposal to give, to educate the whole child. Instead, they're focused on piecemeal, looking at assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Cashmary, please wrap it up.
To help our kids, thanks.
Thank you, next comment.
Terrence Gladney.
Good evening. I found it kind of interesting that one of the superintendent's infamous interjections came right in the middle of a visible articulation of the achievement gap. You know, right when we're able to really start feeling the rawness of this historical reality. I also found it, you know, just. I also found it, you know, just audacious that following the articulation of the achievement gap, you know, especially today, while language is so important in our district and has been heightened, right, by these incidents or this tragedy that happened to our scholars at a school at Kit Carson, right, which is an IB school, that Dr. Bata used words like exceptional, described beautifully, successful, leaving behind. She talked about systemic assessments. What is systemic is racism and the inability of this school, this district, to serve kids of color, kids identified as special needs. We have over 50 years of data across all different testing frameworks, and it still articulates the achievement gap. And what's funny is that even in a year where we know that some parents were taking tests for their students because they were at home, even then, the achievement gap persists with invalid data. But yet, we're talking about which tests we're going to use instead of how we're going to serve our scholars. What a waste of our time. I mean, I just don't understand. This snapshot, even if we don't have iReady year-over-year data, take the snapshots, take these charts, and compare it against the last 20 years, two years, three years. It precedes our superintendent, but it still is being maintained in his leadership. So when we talk about let's not change, we need to actually change because we've been doing the same thing for decades and the same kids are being left out. And that should be the real emergency, but I don't see the urgency on your part.
Thank you, Terrence. All right, I will open up this for our board dialogue.
Just, I guess, we're not going to be, moving forward, we're not going to be using the iReady. The iReady was just for during the pandemic, correct?
What we have indicated, Member Phillips, is a proposal that doesn't have iReady across all of our grade levels at this time. In our communications to our labor partner, we have made a proposal of the assessments that we're going to, that we would like to consider. iReady is not one that would be given to every student at every grade level.
So what is, and, you know, I could be stepping out on a limb here, trying to figure out why certain students are not learning. And I know we've, you know, had some conversations about what representation looks like and how our students perform with those who look like them. If we have a problem here in the district where we are not necessarily bringing in teachers who have perhaps our black and brown students in their best interest, is it possible, and maybe this is a question for staff, is it possible that that is a reflection in the data that we're looking at? Sounds a little complicated. Sounds a little beat.
Yeah.
That's what I mean.
Yeah. What I'll do is I will certainly defer to our team, Chief Academic Officer, Chief Bata, as a former principal, of course, and many of our staff who oversee the development and have participated in the development of these assessments and the role that professional development plays. And to a certain degree, as you mentioned, Member Phillips, the role that the diversity of our teaching force, for example, also can play in the learning of our students.
I think that is such an excellent question, Member Phillips, because there are, you know, you're asking about what is the root cause of the data that we see. And I think we can look to many facets, including do our teachers and all of our staff members know, no matter who they are, how to make sure that every classroom is exactly the right PH for every student who's in that classroom? And that's part of why Superintendent just mentioned professional learning. It's part of why we've really been on a deep and intense journey to bring the universal design for learning to every one of our educators, to every single classroom, because that opens up access and ensures that every student is moving toward being able to be celebrated as an expert learner for who they are. So it's not that a student has to, with universal design for learning, go into a classroom and be able to try to figure out how to be successful and navigate in that classroom. It's the adult's responsibility to learn what is that particular student's superpower and how do I make sure this classroom allows that student's superpowers to come to light for them? So we know that that is one area of deep need for our entire system. And I would love to share with the board in some additional time together, some additional information on the universal design for learning. But it's really about making sure that every one of our students, because we know even for, it doesn't matter, you can put together any group of students that are not performing where we know they can perform, if the adults are doing what they need. What each one of those individual students' needs still might be different. It's our job to figure that out and to make sure we're bringing that to the students, to every single student. It's a very complicated question, and we are, in just validating what our public speaker shared, we historically, long before the pandemic, are not serving our students. Our kids have not been learning to read. And we have a depth of concern for all of our students, but especially our black and brown students. It's a civil right to learn to read. And when we are not doing that, we are withholding children's civil rights. And we see this data that comes to us even after our pandemic that says we are not serving our students. So I appreciate your question, Member Phillips, and I'd love to continue to work together to make differences for our kids. Universal design for learning is one way through professional development that we're working to move that through our system.
Thank you. And I have another question for Dr. Eldridge. Is it possible that we can look at this disaggregated information to locate perhaps the teaching staff that's affecting the children that have the lowest scores?
All right, I'm looking for my mute button there. Can you repeat that question more time, please?
I was trying to see if there was a way to use this in the disaggregated information, that data, to find out what kind of staffing has been put in place for the students who have the lowest scores, primarily focusing on the black and brown students, Native American. I really, really, in plain English, want to know what kind of teachers are teaching children in a way that they are not succeeding and have not been succeeding. Is there a way to look at the data to see that? That might encourage us to be able to perhaps use these one-time funds to hire a lot more black and brown teachers? That might actually make a difference. Because I've seen it make a difference.
Well, our data system is primarily designed at the student level. We're looking at data points that are within the student record that let us know how we can disaggregate that information. We typically hone in at that point because we see that when we have, we're able, for example, when we're able to attribute and say, look at the information for our students by their attendance, look at the information for our students by how many particular incidents they may have been having on behavior, look at the information for our students by how they may rate in our early warning system, our EIS system. It helps us to take more actionable points because we can see, is there, and that's why you can't see it from this standpoint, because it's proprietary and we don't want to hit inside of less than 11. But when our sites actually run this information, they can. They can actually take this information and cut it and slice and dice it down by African-American students, and we can add and add attendance rates of less than 90% who may have had a behavior incident, right? And they can see where those students may exist and be at. We typically try and keep at that level because we try to keep the data being a shining light, right, of where the issue may be as opposed to other type issues on that. And so that's the focus of our dataset. It's normally looking at what is in that student record, what is an attribute of the student record.
Right, right. But we know that we have really high numbers for suspensions and expulsions for black and brown students. So if we're looking at behaviors, that shouldn't be our focus. We should look at what is happening in the classroom. So you say that we can dig into that proprietary information and find that data? I would love to see that. I would like to see the balance in the classroom. And again, I have seen it work. You know, my son specifically was in school and they brought in two black assistants, two males, and it changed the absolute dynamic of those students to see someone who was like them. Grades improved. You're naming things that you wouldn't expect. You're like, why is it that perhaps a student who looks like the other students and also values the rest of the students in the classroom can create success? So, I mean, if you are able to run those numbers, I would like to see that.
And, Member Phillips, if I can just ask some of our staff as well, one of the big whys for having access to this information is, as you know, on Thursdays, our staff get together, our teachers get together and collaborate with one another. And we believe that having access to this level of student information on a regular basis creates a space for teachers to help one another improve their craft as well as they look at sharing best practices in terms of how students have learned maybe a particularly difficult topic in math or in English and ELA or in science. They can compare assessment information, writing samples, and perhaps, again, some of our team members can talk about what some of those best practices look like in terms of how our teachers can support one another, our site leaders can support our teachers when they have access to this kind of information.
I personally would like to see the data. I also think that, I mean, obviously, you know, racial bias is an issue. It is not necessarily something that people recognize or, you know, come into a room talking about, but it could possibly be something that is simple as addressing how you treat certain students and how that affects their learning. So, I mean, again, I do appreciate the report. It does sum up what I was expecting, and like Mr. Gladney said, it's not a surprise to see this. But the why, I think, is something that we are not talking about. I think there's something else to that why. It's not necessarily just being, you know, socio-economically disadvantaged. I think a lot more, you know, does have to do with the world that we live in right now and the country that we're in. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Member Phillips. Member Villa and the member Morosky.
I'll be quick. Again, I always say, thank you for this because overall, we're not meeting our students' needs and it's, you know, like, this is just troubling and very sad for me to see. I know assessments are key. We've been pushing for this so we can really target. And following up with what Member Phillips has said, I think it's important that we look at, obviously, the classrooms, I see that, but school site-specific so we can support those school sites. I mean, there's got to be more that we can dig into on this because I'm just very concerned with these numbers as a district. And can anybody tell me why there's such a majority of students not tested? There's a lot, those numbers are pretty high, and I don't know if that's, I mean, did a parent choose that? Is it a school site? Is it a teacher? Why 36% not tested? And what, I mean, a lot of these numbers are high.
I can kind of speak to that somewhat. So this was a very difficult year for the state as a whole, if you think about that. In 2019-20, the state did not require any school district to take the S back. In fact, there was no required annual assessment. As schools start coming back into session this year, the state said, okay, we're not going to, they weren't going to try and have everyone do S back, then they realized there are connectivity issues, right? We're giving students the S back and then not giving the S back. And so finally, the State Board of Education, through many deliberations and work with the federal government, said, okay, we're going to implement a, have sites or districts give an annual assessment at the end of the school year, but they knew that we were still having issues because they had many students that were in testing at home and some testing in. So our participation rate is typically over 90% for S back, but because of this year, because of the connectivity issues, because students being at home, because of the distance learning most of the time, it was a struggle. And even the state, even though we're reporting the participation rate, they knew it was going to be a struggle going in. So this is really an anomaly. This is not what typically happens with our S back testing. We're typically over 9% for S.
Okay. And, you know, just looking at that number two, 50% not met in math, that's beyond troubling for me because math is really one of those things, it's hard to catch up. Once you're behind, you're behind. So I'm hoping, you know, this goes kind of back to what we talked about in our 5.1, is I would hope that staff, please keep coming back to us because we have these funds that need to be spent, and this is where I'd like the money to be going as well. School site-specific, but if it's not administering tests, if it's looking at different classrooms, I want us to spend the money right now to create a foundation that will pivot and change these students' outcomes because these numbers just, to me, are extremely troubling and we're not going to get out of this. And again, the learning loss that we keep talking about, that we know this is happening before the pandemic, if we're not really digging deeper because these numbers are really alarming to me. So please come back to us and let us know what we can do to get more funding, to get more school site support, whether it's more teachers, whatever we need to do, because these numbers have to change next year.
Thank you, Member Villa and Member Morosky.
Thank you, and I really appreciate my fellow board members' comments as well. So I guess my first, well, my first reaction to these data is it's not good. I'm sorry, this seems very loud. Can you help me out? Oh, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great, thanks. So, you know, I'm very troubled by it as well. I do appreciate the staff work that went into creating the, you know, these beautiful charts that show us how badly we're failing our children. I mean, it's really user-friendly to be able to see and, you know, we can't improve what we can't measure as I think our staff stated. So I do, you know, appreciate all the work that went into it. It's obvious we have a lot of room for improvement. One thing that I noticed about the data is, again, back to Member Villa's comment about, you know, why are there so many kids missing from these tests, is I don't know whether to interpret this data as being even meaningful because of the number of children who are missing from it. In particular, it looks like a real anomaly for the middle school. You know, it's a very low participation rate and a much higher, at least as compared to the other, the other grade bands, a much higher measure of standard met. So I'm just wondering, you know, should we, how much do you trust this data as in staff's kind of professional opinion? Like, is this actually useful or what are the caveats?
Let me ask Dr. Eldridge, because you mentioned in your previous comment what data looked like in terms of participation rates for the rest of the state and how we might compare, Dr. Eldridge, and then just based on that assessment and the participation rate, your sense of an appropriate answer for Member Morosky in terms of ability based on the participation rate?
Sure. And so I'm going to answer this broadly, Board Member Morosky, and I'm looking at ELA. I'm not quite sure if you're referring to ELA or math, but I'll try and answer from both. So English Language Arts, again, we had about 70% of students participate in mathematics. We have about 82% of students, I said wrong, yeah, math, we have about 82% of students participate. The, I'm looking at the information and I'm putting my statistical hat on, and I understand that even though I may have lower rates, when I look at the number of students tested, right, I also know that the sample size is way, is much large. It's large enough for me to make some valid claims. So, you know, I like to have about 90%. Truth is, I don't need that much in order to make valid- I like to have about 90%. Truth is, I don't need that much in order to make some valid claims, right? If I have about 1,000 kids per, 1,000 kids or more, I can make some pretty solid, pretty solid generalizations. And the generalizations are not positive, be very transparent. We do have gaps, right? So even though the participation rate is not, or not that high, as we like it to be in terms of 90%, if participation rate is high enough to validate, yes, we have gaps. We have gaps that are by, that are occurring by ethnicity. And we have gaps that are occurring by program participation. We don't need to have a 90%, 95% participation rate to validate that. It's 5% participation. But I have to admit, I have to admit, yes, there are gaps, even with the data we have.
There's definitely, you know, enough to say that there's gaps. I'm, I'm in agreement with you. I'm just wondering if there's, if there's something systematically different about the 70% who did take the assessment and the 30% who didn't? Because, you know, you have a, you know, so like 30%, that's kind of a big number and it could throw off, you know, it's like, are the, are the, the kids basically, are the kids who are really struggling are also the kids who are not participating in the assessments? Or was a participation sort of generally did it track, you know, demographically, like the, the, like, especially when you have a good?
I did consider that. If you look at ELA data, when we, when we took the data and cut it up into multiple slices, you'll see that even though we had a lower rate, I'm just looking at this socioeconomic status, right? We had a lower rate tested, but we still had a significant gap there. So of the students who did test, who were not socioeconomic disadvantaged, 60% of those students were on grade level, right? 28%, 28% of the students who were not economically disadvantaged were not. And so even though I have 30% not tested, I still have within that 70% a wide band. The 30% probably wouldn't change that, wouldn't change that. May move by a percentage or two, but it's not going to make that huge of a difference in the gap I'm looking at. So when I was looking at this information, the gap of students not testing, but does that number of students not testing explain some of these significant gaps I'm seeing in special education and socioeconomic status? Does it, does it explain what I'm looking at and English, my, my English proficiency and done it? So again, it might move by a percentage or two, but it would not negate that.
Okay, okay, that's very helpful because I just, that's kind of a threshold question that I had about the, you know, how to interpret the whole, all of it. So I appreciate that. Do you know, what, what is the normal for S back participation? Is that like in the 90s?
Yeah, over 90% typically. The state's been kind of, the goal of 95%, not every school has made 95%. The state have been, they've been ramping up the accountability of that. We've been pushing more and more to try and meet that 95%. Normally over 90%.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just, I do still kind of have in the back of my head a concern that maybe these numbers are, are actually slightly worse in reality than we've been seeing. So I just, I guess there's a couple of comments. I mean, I really appreciate a lot about the presentation, the, the explanation of why we need these assessments. The really, I think there's a lot of, a lot of myths and a lot of like thoughts and emotions that people have about, about testing and, you know, what's appropriate. There's, there's a, there's a thought that I've heard people say that I would just like to get your reaction to, maybe this is for, for Chief Academic Officer Bieda, but that assessments, you know, these assessments are not useful for teaching, for, for informing teaching. And I would just like to get your reaction to that, that type of response to this, to interim assessments, because I think it's, it's just something that I've commonly heard.
I think that's a great question. And I'd, I'd, I'd like to offer it from a couple perspectives. I think perspective one, we know that teachers are doing, and you saw, Jeanette showed you the cycle of assessments that go from short term to long term. And she shared with you the importance of this interim or medium cycle assessment and why it's so important. When we say that it's not informative for our teachers, for me, I want to dive into the why. What do we need to do to support teachers to make sure that it is helping teachers? And it tells, tells me that we need to be doing something differently and doing something better. I don't think it is the assessment. It's not the assessment. In fact, Ms. Schroeder and Ms. Fetzer here will both share with you that the, the assessments that we've had prior to this assessment schedule that we're, we just used for the end of the year, the assessments that we've used previously, the ones that we decided to use for, for example, that were aligned to ELA, they were called curriculum embedded assessments. And we knew that teachers, and as a former teacher myself and a former principal, those, those assessments are really helpful for teachers because they line right up with your curriculum and the instruction that you're providing. And, and we knew that our, our labor partners really wanted us to use curriculum embedded assessments. And so that's what we used for ELA. Not, not at this end of the year. At the end of the year, we agreed to using the I-ready assessments. But for our medium term or interim assessments, when teachers say that they don't help, it really tells me that we need to be doing a better job of making sure that they have what they need to be able to help. What we do have that I think is really important is we have every single week, our teachers have an hour together to look at assessments. And when you go back and you look at, Ms. Fetzer shared with us the whys behind assessment, there's one why slide, and I don't remember which slide it was, but it shows you those four questions that we constantly need to be asking ourselves about our students. What do we want the students to be able to learn? How do we know if they're learning it? What do we do if they're not learning it? And what if we, what do we do if they already know it?
Yeah.
These assessments give us that common data point so that we can build on collective efficacy, which has one of the highest levels of ability to bring change for children, collective efficacy, when you put teachers together and use together their strengths. That's what we can do with these assessments. But when teachers say they're not valuable, I worry that we need to be able to provide additional support so that they can, so that they can see their value. Since I have one moment, I think we heard a couple other really important questions and comments from member Villa and member Phillips that I would just like to offer some information on. We, we shared, what, what is this staffing and what, how can these one-time funds support what we just saw in our data that says, this is an emergency, our kids need support and help? And I want to go back to the last couple of board meetings where we shared with you our MTSS design process about bringing forward these supports. So remember, we shared with you that we've designed some FTE, and thank you so much tonight for the resolution, that says that we can use these one-time funds in this way. And we're bringing forward positions to support students under well-being, to support a positive school climate, to support attendance, and to support academics. And then we also brought forward that student opportunity band of supports for our students. So if we go back and think about that, remember we shared with you that we are asking, and now we will move forward with hiring social workers, additional support for students who are experiencing homelessness, additional supports for students in foster care, additional school psychologists and behaviorists and PBIS coaches. We've designed to wrap around, you remember that little puzzle piece with, with a student in the middle? We've designed these supports to wrap around these needs that we now see front and center, that our students really need. And remember that Ms. Flores shared with you that equity index? So when we look to see the achievement gap, the opportunity gap that we've created for our students, because we've, we're, we're getting exactly what we've designed for, remember that equity index is helping us to direct additional supports from these, from these supports that we've designed to places where our students need them the most. Sorry to take so much time, but I just wanted to share those questions popped that forward for, for me.
Thank you. I just, lastly, just comment that, you know, this, the, we need to, we need to have these assessments also for, to be able to monitor at the board level and to be able to provide accountability to our community for what we're doing and how we're improving student outcomes. And I just, you know, it's just, we have to have this information. And I have an urgency about it, about improving these outcomes. They're unacceptable. They, they were unacceptable when I started. They're still unacceptable now. And there's no, I mean, the, the way to improve things is to do the things that we know work, which includes foundationally identifying what, you know, what our children know and how to get them, how to get them there. So, I mean, I just, I, I, it's just sad that we're still spinning our wheels on this stupid foundational thing that we should just have in place, you know? It's, it's insane to me. So, you know, one, a decision to seed, basically seed authority to, to do a foundational, to implement a foundational practice for our children that's necessary for their education. That decision was made in 2016, and we're now continuing to, to deal with it. You know, I'm all for collaboration. I'm all for, you know, input, but not for a veto, you know? That's just, we can't have nothing. And so we need to, we need to have this in place going forward. And I, I hope that, that, that true, you know, good faith collaboration can occur and just get this in place for the next school year. I mean, with, with the lost learning, or, I'm sorry, the unfinished learning that we, that we have from this, this last year, it's just we cannot afford not to do this. So I really appreciate the, the focus on this and you bringing this together, you know, bringing us together for this today. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, member Garcia?
That's really loud, too. Okay, that's better. I just want to thank staff for giving us all this information. It is a lot of information. And my colleagues asked some really good questions. I, I do share the, the concern that we don't have complete data as a system that we can compare across the system. And, and that is very troubling. I, I don't know how, I, as a school board member, have confidence that the decisions that I'm making in terms of investments to support students, to support workforce, are the right investments because we won't be able to evaluate as a system whether or not they're working. So that's what troubles me. And, and then, you know, leaving kids behind, we already saw the data, these are the same kids that get left behind year after year. And, and, and they are, are students with the greatest needs. So that's what's heartbreaking about this. I do have some questions about, there was one slide here and it doesn't have any numbers, but it's the, the 2021, 2020, 21, end of year ELA assessment by overall participation and performance by grade level. And on the participation data, I see that students in grades nine and 10th are at zero participation. So, so can you tell us why?
We'll wait to hear from Mr. Eldridge, Dr. Eldridge on that one, or any of our staff for ninth and 10th grade.
I think we're waiting to go back to the, the ELA slide, if you can go back a couple slides to the grade level for grades nine for ELA.
It's, keep going.
Almost there. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. So what you're looking at here, so I'll show you a little more context. So the assessments in lieu of the S back were grades three, two, eight, and 11. And so we wanted to make sure, we, we knew that that had to be covered. Since we knew we were given these assessments, we said, you know what, let's also provide for our English learner students an additional opportunity to reclassify as a re designated fluent English proficient student. And so in order to do that, we need to have equivalent scores for all students, English learning students as compared to English learner students. Since we were giving these assessments in grades three through eight and 11, by the way, we're going to use those scores as additional data points. We also said, let's open this up for students in grades K1 and 2, as well as nine and 10. And K1 and 2, there was great opportunity taken with that. So we had enough data points in ELA in order to say, okay, now we can have additional RFP opportunities. For grades nine and 10, I'm honestly, I'm not sure why the participation there was not what we wanted to be. The, the negative with that is that we won't be able to use nine and 10, the end of year assessment at grade nine and 10, for one of the reclassification opportunities for our English learner students. We will still be able to use the middle of the year assessment, and so they are, they are going to have an opportunity. But as to why nine and 10, they didn't participate at that level, it taken, it is an opportunity that we're not going to have for, an additional opportunity we'll have for our, for those students. And I think Chief Academic Officer Bieda may also want to add a few things.
Now, that's exactly what I would say, that we offered this opportunity. We want more opportunities to be able to have this common data so that we can reclassify our students. We were hopeful that, that we would have more students or that we would have students participating. But I think it's exactly as Dr. Eldridge stated, those were, those are not, we would say, non-S back grades. And so there was, we didn't have participation.
Okay, so there are additional opportunities for English learners to take some sort of assessment for purposes of reclassification at a later time?
So actually, the, they took one earlier. So we try as much as possible during the school year, anytime we can have an assessment where we can compare English only performance to English learner performance, that gives us an additional, excuse me, academic, because there's two pieces. There are the English, the ELD test, which is the LPAC, which is the state governed, and then there are the academic aspect, and that is the ELA common assessment that we have. Fortunately, we already had some common assessments early in the school year. We had the middle of the year assessments, and I believe we could also go back to the beginning of the year. But we actually know the middle, excuse me, we had the middle of the year assessments in grade seven, 12, so we know they're going to have that opportunity. Students in grades seven, eight, and 11 are going to have two opportunities. The English learner students in grade eight, not, excuse me, nine and 10 are going to have one because of the participation rate and on the second end of year assessment.
Okay, so it sounds as though ELS have multiple opportunities for purposes of potentially reclassification, right? I mean, it's still concerning, though, that our reclassification rates are very low. We have a high percentage of our English learners that are long-term English learners. And the longer you are not reclassified, I think the worse it gets for students who are English learners. And they are 20% of our student population in the district. So, so, so that's, that's another, I think, ball of wax that needs to be addressed. And I think one way that could be helpful is through common assessments. It's, it's an additional tool. That's, that's what a common assessment is. It's one more tool to learn about where students are system-wide and what needs to be done as a system, and where the resources need to be deployed for students and for educators, so that we can bring up those students and then continuously check in. So I did want to ask another, maybe overall question, because this gets to the MOU that was signed that unfortunately has tied the hands, in, in my opinion, I think of, of, of the, of the board, of the district.
in, in my opinion, um, I think of, of, of the, of the board, of the district, that we need to come to consensus. It's, it's very uncommon. I haven't heard of any other agreement like this, um, in any other school district when it comes to, um, being able to develop, um, assessments beyond what the state, the federal or the state, um, assessment requirements are. But, you know, here we are. And I think, um, I think one of the things that I hear is that, the collaboration piece between educ-, I mean, teachers and, um, and, and the, um, district experts, content experts, um, needs to be, um, you know, as specified for in the MOU. But I think what I don't quite understand and what's unclear to me and maybe to the community as well is, I mean, we have experts in the district that are, were teachers probably not that long ago. So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out where this disconnect is as to this, this process that needs to be in place, this committee that needs to take place in order to have this conversation when the assessments have already been created by, I think, experts who have this, this background and were at one point in time in the classroom. So can you talk a little bit about the development of the common assessments in, in terms of, of the, the district, um, expertise?
I would love for Ms. Schroeder and Ms. Vetzar to, to share because they are the, um, they're the magic pixie dust behind all of the work and the brilliance and expertise. And, and Jeanette, can you share too with the, um, the assessment schedule that we're recommending some of the background research that you leaned into to push this, this forward?
Sure, I'm happy to. So I'm going to start with a little history about where the assessments we proposed, we use, came from. I was actually on the SCTA Assessment Committee, um, I want to say five years ago before we had an ELA curriculum. Um, and we were all trying to land around the table the appropriate assessments to use for students to progress monitor how they're doing towards the end of the year. And the dis-, the Assessment Committee unanimously agreed that we needed to purchase a curriculum with embedded assessments in it. And that launched another committee that caused the adoption of the curriculum we currently have. So we have Benchmark Advance with curriculum embedded assessments and My Perspectives with curriculum embedded assessments. So these curricular resources were selected by a committee of SCTA members. And that is where our assessments came from. In our curriculum embedded assessments for primary, there are no foundational skill benchmark assessments. So we worked to find benchmark resources and we put proposed grade level appropriate assessments in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, and third grade so that we could catch kids earlier that were showing signs of struggling with foundational skills. And that's how we've landed with the assessments we currently have. On the new proposal that, um, we are suggesting, we've actually shifted some of the foundational skill assessments that we are proposing. They are, um, approved by the Dyslexia Committee. They're called a DIBELS assessment. This is hot off the press news, nobody knows this. They come recommended by CDE, Core, and the University of Oregon's Literacy Program. I've been involved with a literacy block grant because, I don't know if you know this, but the state of California is getting sued because we are failing to teach our students to read by fourth grade. And they did an assessment of all the schools in California and how they performed on the SBACK when we gave it last before the COVID pandemic. And they have given an opportunity to the 75 lowest performing third grade students, elementary schools, and in Sacramento City, we have four of them. So out of 75 school, or out of all the schools in California, which there's over 6,000, I believe, we have four that have performed the lowest in the state of California. So I have been going through training with these administrators and a group of primary teachers. And we have been taken through a nine-session learning around proper assessments to identify students early using DIBELS. And, um, so this assessment actually would be quicker than what we've been proposing earlier. And the beauty about this assessment is when you give it to a student, if they're meeting the threshold of the assessment, then that shows that the tier-one instruction is working for that student. So we don't need to intervene and, and try to figure out what's going on. And so it would allow us to then focus on students that are not making progress so we could pinpoint where we do need to, to really address the, these, the necessary skills to get them where they need to be, the right appropriate ones. And so that's kind of a history around the ELA assessments. I really do believe, you guys, if we can catch kids reading appropriately and we can support teachers to really do great quality-first instruction when it comes to teaching reading early in the earlier grades, that they will do better on the data that we looked at today. If you can't read, you can't do these complicated tests. And so we do need these assessments in the younger grades so we can really catch kids early and intervene and give them those skills that they need so that they can excel.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. That was very helpful. And, and, you know, districts will be getting additional funds, um, to invest in earlier years. So we, we need, um, a way to evaluate, um, the success of those investments, so.
And it's not just about the assessments, you guys. The assessment is the tool. It's about the time we spend looking at the data so that we can evaluate what we need to do with the teachers, right? The teaching that's happening, right? It's not the kids, the kids are the common denominator. Every year, the kids come, they're the common denominator, but the same things are happening. So we need to, we need to support teachers in improving their practice so that it's meeting kids where they are. And so I hope it's not just about the assessments, you guys. It's about meeting with teachers and professional development and tailored to what the data is actually showing. I think that's really key here.
Understood. The assessment is the tool. So I appreciate that. I do, um, have one last question because I want to, um, be mindful of my other colleagues to, um, ask questions. On the, um, last part of the presentation, uh, talked about, um, the current status of the, um, assessments, MOU, and the invitation to, um, for, uh, for SCTA to reconvene, um, the committee, uh, to, you know, revisit this, this issue of common assessments so, um, that the district can promptly, um, begin planning for the 2021, 22 school year. So what is the timeline for that? Is that this is not part of the successor, um, contract negotiations? This is separate and independent? So when are we going to see something? Because the school year is just a few months away. So there's planning that needs to take place. I don't know beyond that what that looks like. But when would the first common assessment be delivered after, once the, um, the kids come back to in-person learning on September 2nd? So I'm just trying to think of timelines and what needs to happen beforehand in order for there to be a successful implementation, um, you know, post-COVID, in order to really understand what the needs are so that we can direct the funds accordingly.
Member Garcia, excellent question. I, I will ask Ms. Beada and our team, uh, to give you kind of a summary of what's in our proposal to SCTA. Uh, I think Mr. Bozio explained it very well, uh, in terms of the decision from the arbitration that took place. We are hopeful that this Assessment Committee can get together and discuss, uh, their thoughts on our proposal. We have, uh, shared that information with SCTA. But why don't we take, uh, the first question, which is an easier one? What is the current assessment schedule in terms of the first round of assessments that would take place at the beginning of the school year, please?
I'll, I'll open and then I'll turn to, to our experts who designed the schedule and, um, have made the recommendations. We are starting with, um, beginning of the year assessment so that we can assess what kids know. And I think we have to be super careful here. And you'll hear me continue to ask that we, we know that we have, um, some learning needs that we need to make up for, but if we keep coming to our kids and talking about learning loss and emergency and not coming with from the perspective of you've got this, we've got this, we've got you together, we're going to make this happen. Come, it, come to us, it's going to be a joyful, wonderful experience and we're going to move together. So we're starting the year with, with assessments to find out what kids do know. We know they've learned, they have learned and what they do, what they did not learn so that we can really maximize our time. One thing that we need to remember is our time with students is super finite. And kids, we do expect as they return, they'll fatigue. They absolutely will fatigue, um, in, in the learning space. And so we have to be, um, really thoughtful about the instruction that we're providing and making sure that it's prescriptive and that our, our instruction meets their needs. So we do open with some entry assessments. We have those backed up a bit based on grade level. So, um, they do not start like the first day of school. We want teachers to spend some time just getting to know their students, spend some time building some relationship, and then start to assess. Here's what we have to balance though. We do not want to wait many weeks to give the assessments and then wait to, to, to analyze the data and visit, have time for teachers to visit with colleagues because our, our students also don't have time to waste. So we can't wait weeks and weeks before we start our assessments. But we do have them starting at the very beginning of the year with entry assessments so that we can assess what they know now and what they, what they still need to learn. The timing of that backs up a little bit for our kindergarten and our first graders. We're giving those earliest grades a little bit of time to acclimate into the classroom. And then I'll let, um, both Jeanette and Makila share some additional, additional perspective. So Jeanette and Makila.
You know, do you want to go, Miki, or you want me to go? Just a little background on how, there's two types of assessments on the ELA calendar. We have foundational skill assessments, and those are given in kindergarten, first, second, and certain parts in third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. Because foundational skills, if they're taught well, students should be ready by third grade. So they start to taper off, right? They turn into, uh, morphology and language standards more than foundational skills. So we do have assessments for foundational skills in the younger grades. That's the primary focus. And then for grades three and up, we do ask that they give the beginning of year or interim one, which is part of the curriculum embedded assessments. And the way the elementary assessment is set up is it is the exact same assessment that they would give at the end of the year. So it's kind of a baseline. So you can have kids take the assessment to see what standards they come in knowing so that way you can prioritize what you're teaching, right? And what kids need, who, which kids need more focus on certain standards. And then again, you do some teaching, you have three units that you teach, and then you would give another interim to see if they have attained what you have done. And you're working towards that summative assessment. That's how it works in the ELA world. The foundational skill assessments are very tailored to what's taught at the grade levels. In kindergarten, we're really working on certain skills that build into first grade, that build into second and build into third. But we are going to suggest that we assess fluency all the way up because fluency is an indicator that we can, we can see if kids have, um, some gaps in that foundational skill instruction that we need to attend to so they can access the curriculum in their grade level. All the assessments in ELA are three times a year, beginning, middle, and end. If you do the CASP, you don't have to give the end, okay? Because we don't, we really are not like test to test. It's really about monitoring your progress towards the end and being proactive rather than reactive with your instruction.
Sure. So I'll take a moment just to give the approach that we take in the area of mathematics. In the beginning of the year, we look towards diagnostic testing, which means that we're looking to see how ready is that student for this current grade level, the standards that they're going to approach. A diagnostic would dip down some grade levels, but keep the content focus the same. When we have worked with teachers at some school sites as they opt into working with training specialists and others in CNI around looking at that data and how do we use this data to inform? We have guiding documents that take each piece of the diagnostic data and spread it out over the scope and sequence documents that really focus on the priority standards. Like, here it is, this is what your students, um, this is how they tested in this particular point. You know, you're really going to need to focus in this particular area because this is what our, our tests tell us, what the assessment tells us. For the middle piece, uh, interim assessments that are looking at assessing after teaching has happened. Right? So after that teaching has happened, there's small, uh, fewer number of questions, these proposed assessments. And one thing that's characteristic here is that they ask students to produce their thinking, to produce work, not just select responses. In that production of, um, their problem solving, their thinking is incredibly important. And it's also some things that we are asked to do for smarter balance assessments, but we're asked to do that in our daily lives. Explain what you're thinking, be able to share that to somebody, with somebody else so that person can understand. This is a critical piece of those interim assessments. The end of the year, we look towards smarter balance and offer an opportunity for the non-smarter balanced grades to take a predictor test for the future grade level as an option.
So I'm, I'm trying to count here. So we're really talking about two tests a year because for ELA, there's CASP at the end. And then for math, there's the smarted balance.
So, so both ELA and mathematics take the smarter balance assessment under the CASP umbrella, right? So we, we have that at the end of the year for grades three through eight and then 11. So this is why there's some optional kind of pieces in there. With English Language Arts, it's a beginning of the year, a middle of the year, and an end of year with that aspect taking the end of year spot. With the mathematics, we have a diagnostic at the beginning of the year and propose for two interim assessments. So that would be one additional compared to what ELA proposes.
Got it. Thank you.
Member Phillips, I know you had another question. Go ahead. Oh, go ahead. I'll go last.
So I, just looking at the numbers and, you know, all the data, it's, makes, it, it makes sense to me that everything is what it is, but, um, these numbers really do inform teaching. They show that hidden why. And I'm just, I'm making a plea that we really consider hiring teachers, educators, you know, that match the profile of our children. The pandemic brought to light a lot of, uh, opportunity and achievement gaps in our black and brown students. And I'm saying here that it's quite possible that some of this extra funding can be used to improve upon what has been brought to light, which is, um, you know, the, the gaps. Collective efficacy makes me worry because sometimes you get a lot of people in the same room and you get a little group think going, and that might not be, um, I, I think it, not saying it needs to be supervised, but I'm saying that, you know, we have to get the right people in the room. Or we have to get, you know, enough different types of ideas in the room so that everyone can grow. I'm sure that's the zone of proximal development or something, but it's, it's very important that we make sure that all the voices that are speaking to improve the lives of our children are definitely addressing, um, some of these issues. Wraparound, I don't have much to say about it because, again, it's the same thing as with the room. You have to have the right things to wrap around the students in order to. You have to have the right things to wrap around the students in order to get that, that success. So, you know, I'm probably going to keep pushing that we spend that money. Prove me wrong. We've tried everything for a long time and maybe it's time just to prove me wrong by doing something outside the box. But yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Member Rhodes.
Yeah, I feel like I'm at a concert too. Turn me down a little bit. Thank you. Appreciate that. No, this, the conversation is a very rich conversation today. Gives you a, a lot to digest and, and to think of. Member Phillips speaks today eloquently about the impact of efficacy and self efficacy for our students, specifically black and brown students. And it holds a lot of merit that we should look at and really take and consider moving on some of her suggestions. But also, where's Ed at? I don't, I don't see him, but I'm sorry. Ed, yeah, I mean, Director, Dr. Eldridge, I apologize, Dr. Eldridge. I'll say your title. Man, you, you've put together something that's very impressive. And, and I appreciate your work and your heart in this data field. It's very important. Jeanette, thank you for your, your thoughtful answers to our colleagues. I think Jeanette articulated amazingly the difference between being data driven and data informed. And so I really appreciate you in the space today as well. Obviously all the staff members and my, my colleagues, you guys, you guys killed it and I, I really appreciate the, the conversation. But also qualitatively, we could, we could have told you this, right? We, we know the numbers. The report, you know, gives great quantitative data that just reaffirms the aforementioned. We could have told you that. And the same data that we get year in and year out for our students. And that's the same students that we get the most money to, to impact the inequities. And so as, as we kind of look at this, I believe somebody said something about by student, by need, by inequity. And that's, that's a very powerful statement. I, I don't, who said that? Was that you Superintendent? Very powerful statement Superintendent. And we, we, we need to look at, we look at policy, we look at this data. That's how we should be looking at everything and when we're impacting them. And, and now it leads me to my question. Those were just statements, but this is my, my question that I have is to Dr. Eldridge, I guess. Are we able to break down this data by trustee area and, and, and school site in, in that area and to like kind of gauge that in each of our areas? Dr. Eldridge?
Yep, we are just making sure my microphone. We are able to look at it by trustee. Concerned is for those student groups that have insights of less than 11. For example, some of our ethnic groups foster youth students where a trustee area may have less than 11. That can be problematic. And so typically when we go to trustee area, we have to be concerned with, well, a lot of concerns by school, like so school becomes an issue. So anyway, the answer is yes, we just have to be concerned with how, how finite we can make that data without violating student privacy. But like the, the data points typically, yes, we can.
Okay. I mean, that, that, that's amazing. I, I think it, I'll speak for myself to know where the trustee area lies within this data information. And being able to talk to our community in that trustee area around that and then give them how this is impacting your area specifically, and then the broader picture of how this is impacting our district as well. So that people can tether to their, their, their direct personal interests. It's not like this, it's not overly broad to say, hey, the district is, is this. We're saying, hey, our area is this. Breaking down your school site is this. And this is where we need to connect. And as, as trustees, we have the unique opportunity to speak for our communities as we're on, on, on this seat. But also to inform our communities and engage in, in a different way to bring them into the process as well. And I think this can be a very valuable tool to bring people into the process. So I will leave my states with that. But beautiful conversation today and I look forward to more.
Thank you, Member Rhodes. Maybe we can get a B C on that breakdown. That'd be fantastic. All right. Um, I just, I first, I just wanted to thank staff for this blueprint of where we're at. I can tell there's so much work and heart that went into this presentation. So I just want to say thank you for that. And, you know, when I look at these numbers and I, and I appreciate, you know, all of our board members. I feel like we were all kind of on that same wavelength because you guys were asking questions that I had written down. So I was just like crossing them off as you guys were asking them. So I won't re-ask them. But one thing that also that stood out for me, a member Garcia had asked about the ninth and 10th graders for ELA. But also what, what stood out to me was the 59% of 11th graders that are going off to, to their senior year and that we're just sending them out into the world. And then what? Then, then what? What, what's happening to them? And, you know, I keep asking myself, shouldn't each of our students have a level playing field? Each playing field is going to look different for, for each of our students, but shouldn't they have a level playing field? And I don't, I know that all of our answers are absolutely yes, right? They, they absolutely should. But, you know, without, without assessments, you know, I, as I'm going through, I was just like writing words like wow. Like, you know, when I, we see like the end of the year assessment results, you know, 20, you know, that, that large amount that's not meeting the, the, um, not meeting their, their expectations of, you know, where they should be at. And, you know, the, how large of those gaps are. And, you know, in, in terms of the MOU, just, just think about that. 2016, let that sink in for a minute. It is 2021. 2016 and we're still talking about this? Not a sickening. We're talking about our students here. We've got to do something. We've got to be able to come to this table. I mean, I just, I, I, I mean, I sort of, I kept on circling that, that 2016. I can't believe that it's been that long. And, you know, this is, this is the last thing that I'll say. This is something that really just stood out to me tonight. We had two live comments from our community members that, that came out to speak on this. We had 24 live comments before we went into closed session on an equal important item, but it was about adult issues. Here we are talking about our students and we had two live comments. Where is the outcry from, from everybody on this, right? I'm pleading to our community, this is important. How are we able to even hold our district, our superintendent, our board, our site level staff responsible for student outcomes? We can't with these numbers, right? We look at, we, we say that it's not surprising. Yeah, I agree. Not surprising. How can we hold anybody responsible? We're talking about our kids. It is my plea to the community. Please come out, say something about this. This is important. And, um, and I, you know, just last, I just want to say like, how, how do we know what our students' needs are? If we don't have these types of assessments and without knowing those five whys that, that Chief Bier was saying, this is not a fair playing field. So that, that's all I want to say tonight. Does anybody, Superintendent, it's 10:26. Go ahead. I want to make sure we don't have to extend our meeting.
I hope not. Member Pritchett, I do want to just acknowledge that for most of us around the days today, this MOU does precede us. It's been a, a generation of students that are going through our district that have been impacted by that MOU. And certainly we're going to continue to do everything we can to change the fact that if at that point in time, in fact, there was any type of overtesting, which is a narrative that you hear nationally, if you will, that, that the solution to this isn't from, isn't going from overtesting to no testing, if you will, from over assessing to no assessing. And I think you can hear from our staff, their deep commitment not to utilize this information in any way that is, that would have negative consequences for our students or even for any of our teachers and site administrators. That is not the purpose of why we want to do this. It simply is more foundational than that to become sort of the underpinning of, of us being more transformative in the work that we do. And I hope that that is what our community does here. I do want to really quickly acknowledge, and maybe this will put our time at risk. Member Pritchett, that as you talked about these two issues, I do think that it is critical that I offer some commentary to the topic that yielded a lot of these conversations earlier today. I did craft and send an email to all of our families in light of the incident that occurred at Kit Carson. And I do want to apologize to our students who experienced this unacceptable commentary in their classroom. And I of course want to extend that apology to our entire district and to our school site community as well. As, as you might expect, I have ordered a district level investigation into this matter. And we will of course take appropriate action simply because we will continue to address systemic racism and its impact on our students, of course. And this work will not be complete without an understanding of both the contributions of and oppression of peoples of different faiths, gender orientations, abilities, languages, race, and of course ethnicity as well. The work will require us to look at our own work, including here in SAC City Unified. And we will continue to address racism with honesty and by creating a space for introspection and dialogue. I said earlier in a statement that if history makes some of us uncomfortable, then so be it. If we have to continue to remind people that we are all born equal, then we will do that every single day. And if some are, if some of us are surprised that our institutions, including SAC City Unified Schools have advantaged some and have, and, and have disadvantaged others, then let's be clear and do something to address why we're allowed, why we've allowed this. The fact that some of our students, for example, are given these assessments regularly with fidelity and used to support them and others do not is, is an example of a system design that needs to be disrupted. But beyond that, I just want to really acknowledge that this is yet another painful event in the history of SAC City Unified. We are taking the matter very seriously and I will continue to keep our board and our community updated on what happens with this ongoing investigation. But again, I just want to reiterate that any racial slur, however it is interpreted, is not okay, was not okay then, is not okay today, and we will not tolerate that type of behavior as it just does not live up to the standards that we expect in terms of behavior and professionalism from all employees here in SAC City Unified. So my apologies, we have made a commitment to reach out to all students that have been impacted by this and provide a safe space for them to express themselves, for them to begin a healing process. But that said, I hope that our community will continue to hold us accountable on all of these topics because they are so critical for us to begin the transformative work that our students and our families deserve in Sacramento.
Thank you, Superintendent, and I'm sure we all concur on those thoughts. Thank you again to staff for an in-depth conversation, your hard work on this. Thank you to my colleagues for a really great conversation around assessments. This is an informational item. So we're going to be talking about this for a while, I'm sure. All right. What was that? Oh, sorry. And then I, we failed to, to ask for announcements taken in closed session, Ms. Collins.
There were, there were no announcements out of closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we, did you have something before we adjourned? Okay. Can I get a motion for adjournment? So moved. All in favor, say aye. All right. Thank you. Good night.